All right, I believe everyone is here, so we can get started. Deputy Clerk Schultes, would you read the preamble for us, please?
Yes, thank you. In accordance with the applicable statutes of the State of Illinois and the ordinances of the City of Prospect Heights, notice is hereby given that the City Council meeting of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Prospect Heights is being held on Monday, February 13, 2023, at 6:30 p.m., in person in the City Council chambers, Prospect Heights City Hall, 8 North Elmer's Road, Prospect Heights, Illinois, and simulcast on Zoom, Acting Mayor Matthew Dolick presiding. This meeting will be broadcast live on cable channels Comcast and WOW Channel 17 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. It will also be recorded and televised on Comcast and WOW Channel 17 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. Attendees who wish to speak on agenda or non-agenda items, we provide an opportunity during the meeting. There's a five-minute time limit for speakers.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'd like to call to order the City Council regular meeting being held today, Monday, February 13, 2023, at 6:30 p.m. in the City Council chambers located at 8 North Elmer's Road. Madam Clerk, could we have a roll call, please, to establish a quorum?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Alderman Ludwitzson?
Here.
Alderman Dolick?
Here.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Here.
Alderman Cameron?
Here.
Alderman Dash?
Here.
All right, thank you. We do have a quorum. All of us are here. Could we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. The first item is the approval of minutes. We have the minutes for January 23, 2022, City Council regular meeting minutes. Could I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion. Second, Morgan Adams?
We have a motion and a second. Are there any corrections or additions? There being none, could I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dolick?
Aye.
Alderman Ludwitzson?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. There are no presentations or appointments this evening. Item six is public comment on agenda matters. Madam Clerk or Deputy Clerk, do we have anyone that has signed up, or does anyone wish to speak?
I don't have anyone. Mayor?
Hello, this is Nicholas Cologne.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
Would like to speak on the first new business topic there, letter A, when, at appropriate time, please.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
You'd like me to proceed now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to kind of give a little bit of testimony about my background. I've been in communication with Dan Peterson from the city, and just wanted to just share some information about the short-term rental that we've developed at our property address, which is located at 408 Owen Court. So we have actually lived in that property for about two and a half years. We love the house, we love the neighborhood, et cetera, and for employment purposes, ended up moving out to California in late 2019. Our plan was originally to sell our home, and, you know, due to the COVID pandemic and so forth, the real estate market got fairly soft, and so we ended up renting out the house for a couple of years, which was okay, but really wasn't going to be something that would have been sustainable for us in the long run. So we were kind of faced with the decision earlier last year in 2022. The tenant we had had that stayed in our property for about two years, his lease had finished and he had moved on, and we were either going to sell the property or attempt to go with a short-term rental program of some kind. And we had considered a lot of options, and with the short-term rental, there were many reasons as to why we would want to do that. One of the biggest ones was simply just to open up flexibility of possession of the property. We, after having moved over a couple of year period, we realized that we still have deep connections in the Chicago area. My wife and I and kids all have family members there and have a deep need to still return to the area on a fairly frequent basis. So obviously, having a traditional rental doesn't allow you to stay in your own home. So ultimately, we did decide to move forward, and we listed our property with a company called Evolve, and it has been way more successful than we had originally anticipated. It's been a very positive thing for us as a family to be able, for us to actually generate quite a bit more revenue than we were expecting. In fact, quite a bit more than the traditional unfurnished rental market would have bored. Our property has done very well in the vacation rental space, and on several occasions, we've been able to return to the Chicago area to actually use our own home, and that's been a huge benefit to us. And now, moving forward, we see our house as much more of a long-term asset for us, not only financially, but also just as a physical place that we can come back and visit family. Most recently, I, we had, my father passed away a few months ago, and we were able to have several of our family members stay with us for a four- or five-day period, which was really important for us at that time. And just managing the property and so forth, you know, you hear horror stories about Airbnb, and we just haven't seen any of those issues that you might have seen out in the media and so forth. We haven't had to call the police or anything like that, and I'm hoping that this is something that the city will view as beneficial. It's obviously generating some tax revenue, and if the city approves this, I don't know that it's necessarily going to be some kind of huge market in Prospect Heights, but if, say, 15 or 20 homes would do something similar to what we're doing, I would think that that's a pretty decent amount of revenue that would help support the city directly through taxes, but also to kind of modernize the ordinance, you know, kind of along the same lines as Uber and Lyft, that the people that would come to town are often corporate travelers, they're vacationers, and people are utilizing other businesses in Prospect Heights while they're there, i.e. restaurants, and, you know, the local stores, et cetera, rental car agencies and so forth. So there's not just a direct impact in our house, but many of the other businesses throughout the area would benefit. So thanks for letting me speak, and I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody had it.
All right, thank you very much for your time. Does anyone have any questions? We usually don't address these, but does anyone have a specific question at this point? Thank you again for your time, sir. We do appreciate it. Moving on, there is no consent agenda and no old business, which brings us to new business, which is this topic. And on the agenda, I'm going to combine items nine A and nine F. The first is staff memo and ordinance for consideration of a text amendment to Title V, Chapter 2, definitions in Chapter 6, adding short-term rentals to the R1 Single Family District. This is a first reading only, open for discussion, and no action is going to be taking place. On a related item, nine F, staff memo and ordinance for consideration of changes to Title III, Chapter 7, the Property Rental Code, adding regulation for short-term rentals. And again, this too is a first reading. Director Peterson, if you'd like to address these first?
Mayor Dolick, Council, thank you very much. If you remember, I was here a month or so ago and introduced this topic to you. We had a public hearing last month with the PCBA. Mr. Cologne attended and provided testimony to the benefits that he saw. He was very instrumental in the help of drafting this ordinance to ensure that we have proper safety in, meet the regulations that will benefit both us and protect us and allow for rental market to move forward. The PCBA unanimously recommended adding short-term rentals to, I have no idea what this is, short-term rentals to the R1 Single Family Residential District as a permitted use. Now, that was the easy part of the evening, okay? But what is more important is the second part, which is the rules and regulations that are found in Title III, Chapter 7, which is the Property Rental Code. This is where the meat of this program is entailed, so if you, I'm going to highlight one of the, some of the areas that were discussed, testimony given, and why this is very important to the program. First of all, it defines exactly what we're talking about. Adds the whole, what is a short-term rental? What can it be? Where can it be? And how can it be used? It is specifically in the R1 district, and it's not allowed in the R2. Most of those are multifamily rentals, so you're having rentals of rentals, and that does not, is not what the city is looking for. It also, too, establishes a fee schedule. Currently, our multifamily rental is $25 per unit, per year, and a $100 annual inspection. This, we are proposing a $500 application fee because there's going to be more intense background checks. You know, we do call for police checks on the people that can't have been convicted of certain felonies. There's other, other parts of this. Also, too, we do, each application will come before the council for final approval before actual issuance of the short-term rental. They will be providing documents that relate to what is their marketplace vendor, is it Airbnb, is it VRVO, is it Evolve? Also, too, they have to provide levels of insurance, because there's a difference between short-term rental insurance and long-term standard renter insurance. We also are going to have to do a full-blown inspection of the unit to ensure occupancy rates, you know, just so that we don't have situations where more people are there. We also are going to be checking to make sure, and part of this ordinance requires them to have video cameras on the outside of the house to video, to give screenshots of the vehicles that are in the parking lot, accesses to doors, the garage, those safety points. So, not that we want to know what's inside, but what cars, because Mr. Cologne said, one of the biggest problems with how the ordinance was originally going to be drafted, they'd have to provide you a written list of who the tenants were. Well, a lot of times, depending on when these folks come in, they won't know for a day or two. You won't know whose car, because they're renting. At least with the video cameras, we have a visual confirmation and the ability to go back and search that if necessary, so they'll have to prove to us that they have storage capacity, okay, so that we could go back, should there ever be an issue. Additionally, one of the bigger things that we will be looking for is if their marketplace provides, their marketplace vendor, whether it's the Airbnb, Evolve, or whatever, that to make sure that they, if they don't handle the payments of the taxes, the required fees to various taxing entities, then they are required to have another service that will ensure that we get our payments. So we're not chasing individual owners. We're going to, that all the paperwork's filled out right, that we know where that is, so that we are going to be able to collect the motel taxes that are due to the city. It also provides that we can audit them on an annual basis of still shoes, so that we are insured that we can, we're getting the tax revenue that we're entitled to. One of the bigger, the other items are, some of these rules are minor in nature, and we don't, there's a provision in the ordinance originally drafted that they have called for revocation, and it's still there. However, we did add a clause in the ordinance for penalties, so if something smaller, more of the minor level, that doesn't warrant a revocation. Also, too, whenever we revocate someone's license, you have to show substantiation, that there's a severity enough, so when we do have the hearing, we can prove cause, proper cause, to revoke someone's license. So at the end of the day, there was a resident from the community that came to speak to the issue, Mr. Paul Gephardt from Drake Terrace. Originally, he had concerns about this. He ended up raising those concerns, but then thanked the city for efforts to protect the neighborhood. Mr. Cologne was very instrumental in assisting us going forward with this, and he's been an excellent compliant rental property. I do not believe that we are going to have hundreds of short-term rental properties, but the way our program was set up is we had no way of enforcing that prior to this. So with that, the PCBA recommended unanimously, recommendation to approve the addition of short-term rentals as a permitted use in the R1 district, and they concur unanimously with the recommended changes to Chapter 3, Title 7. And with that, I'm here to entertain any questions, if you should have any. Mr. Cologne, let's stay down the line if you have any questions related to the day on us.
Does anyone have any questions for Daniel this time?
Yes.
Go ahead, sir.
Through this, will we be able to limit the number of cars, number of people in the unit, that type of stuff? Does it go a step beyond that if you own it and live there, we really don't have any kind of limitation? But because it's a rental, are we able to say, you may not have any more cars than, you know, what would be normal in this location, whatever that might be?
There are two steps to this, that question, Alderman Ludwitzson. The first one is by establishing an occupancy limit, and we will be, before any, part of the application process is a thorough inspection, establishing a limit. That will establish the maximum load. The owner will not be able to mark it for any ordinance, and one of the violations could be is if it's found out that you're overbooking or having too many clients, that's one of the reasons we had a penalty clause.
So just in general, two-bedroom, two-bath, what is that?
Two-bedroom, two-bath, depending on the size of the bedroom, it could be four to five.
Okay.
Okay, depending on, there's a lot of large bedrooms in this town that could handle, but the sizes for occupancy limits are set by the International Property Maintenance Code, which is what we've adopted as our base housing code. And then the parking, we specifically address, I gotta find my page here, give me one second, please. Okay.
I didn't think so.
Overnight parking must be accommodated on-site or another approved location. Parking including overnight parking shall be in conformance with the city code and zoning ordinances. So that, we spell that out as one of the requirements. So we, Mr. Cologne's property, for example, has the ability to, I believe you can have five cars in it? In your parking, your driveway, four or five?
Yeah, there, we could technically put two in the garage and then four in the driveway, but we really only have space for one in the garage, because there's other bikes and things in there, so. But that's, I'd say, five of cars, and that the, our occupancy limit is 14, based on the size and number of bedrooms. However, we limit our, we personally limit it to 11, because we just don't want 14 people there. That's too many.
And most of the people that are coming to this, in my research, are not one person, one car. These are usually families that are coming to these types of homes, so you get maybe a Ford Explorer with four people in that. So I don't see the parking as the issue. Most of our, most of our single-family homes have more than adequate, more than the minimum required.
Right, no, I know it's not a physical problem, it's just a, it's just a look. We have some long-term, single-family rentals that have, you know, a lot of cars in the driveway, and I, you know, having three daughters, and everybody has their own car today, we had five at one time, too. So when you get beyond that, and people are driving through the front yard, or having to pull four cars out to get one in, I just don't want it to be different than what it would be.
I don't believe, based on the, most of the houses I'm familiar with, that I would think would be considering this type of a program, I don't think that would be any different than a normal family with husband and wife and three or four kids, which is what a lot of our residents have.
Because I envision this to possibly be, you know, someone's looking for a place to go, you know, maybe 30 days, or two weeks, or three weeks, and, you know, I can, I don't see the draw of people coming here to rent for vacation. I don't know where you go here, if you're, you know, going on vacation. It's kind of a weird place to do that. So my fear is that everything looks the same, is treated the same, and acts the same as single-family, you know, when somebody's renting it. One of my other questions, and you might have it in the, buried in the detail there, but is there a requirement that the person who utilizes this program be the actual owner? Because I'll give you a scenario. Somebody rents that place, long-term, they got five years, they can't, they can't, they're not going to be able to stay there, and then they're going to sublease and go through this program and take anybody that they can get, you know, to...
That's part of the application process, and one of the things we're going to install into this is a thorough background check on the owner of the property. The owner has to be the one that is applying for the license.
Not, not somebody who's a...
Not a subletter, not a third party. This has to be an owner that is, because the owners on the hook for their property, they have to provide the, they have to provide the other documentation. They're the ones who are contracting with the marketplace provider. So I think that we can, that's covered in, will be covered in our application process.
And just two more questions. In there, you're talking about modifying the single-family code, but I do see that you have a description saying that, who it doesn't apply to, but then you do say it does apply to townhouses or condos, or...
That was a definition on, trying to define what that is, and that, we can take a double look, but when we work with legal, that was a, this definition that came out from what could be under a generic short-term rental program. So we could take a closer look at that, and, but that's, you know, when we talk to legal, that's how that came, but we can tighten that up.
Okay. And then, I'm asking these questions because just my concern that, doing this, I get that it's helpful to people that have a situation that comes up where they're moving out of town, or for some reason they want to do it. Would that want us to be the place where people are coming and buying inexpensive homes and saying, oh, rental market's really good, I'm not going to put any money into this place, but I'm going to, you know, 30 days, people who are, you know, hard to find a place to move in, and they're not going to put a lot of money into it, the houses aren't going to get better. I just don't want to create a market we really don't want to have, and is there any way you can tell me how this helps the surrounding home's valuation based on having this program?
That's a great question, and I don't know if there's a answer out there to kind of get an assessment, what the value added is, or what the value detriment is. The, you know, there's lots of examples of vacation rental homes all over the country in very, very pristine prime communities. You go to the eastern shore of Lake Michigan, you go to most of the mountain communities of Colorado, you go to those places, and I've never read a situation where they've been a negative detriment in terms of the value. I think having strong rules up front is what protects that value, but I don't have, for your part, an answer on a true percentage.
I'm with you on wanting to control it if it exists, you know, I'd rather be in front of it than have it just operate in shadows, but I don't want to inadvertently create something either, you know, I don't want to create a...
Can I speak to that?
Sure.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Cologne.
Thank you. I don't want to interrupt, but I do have some feedback regarding those questions that I think might have some value to this discussion. So being that you're, being as an owner in the marketplace for short-term rentals, what drives us as owners and what's going to continue to give us business and repeat business is high ratings. Currently, we have a 4.96 out of 5. We've had somewhere roughly around 35 reviews, and that is highly important for anybody that would own a short-term rental to establish themselves as a, with a high rating. That's what gets you higher rates, it's what gets you repeat business, et cetera. Everything in the market is about ratings. If you go to a restaurant, you're going to look at how many stars do they have? And it's no different in offering a short-term rental. Our house is in significantly better shape now than it was when we lived there. It was in good shape when we lived there, but now it's in great shape, because we have revenue to support it, we've invested, and I, I'll just give you the number to just give you an example. In order to prepare, to get ready to list the property with Evolve, we invested $50,000 in our house, between painting it, flooring, landscaping, a number of, you know, things that were needed, door lock changes, cameras, TVs, furniture, dishes, towels, sheets, all of the stuff that's going to go well beyond the, just the baseline city code of what's required, or that if you don't shape up, we're going to cite you for, you know, not keeping up with the ordinance. We, anybody in the market just wouldn't exist if they, if they were not paying attention to some of these details, especially in Prospect Heights, the size of the house, the nightly rate that that's going to yield. Mr. Peterson, perhaps you can share some of that data? I don't know what's appropriate for me to say exactly here, but I'm just trying to point to that I think it actually does create a environment that would, that would encourage better care for the home versus a long-term rental where somebody's just kind of collecting a monthly guaranteed check, per se, that, I think in those scenarios, it's more likely that less care is going to be taken for the home, and only the minimum is going to be Additionally, vacationers do come to Prospect Heights. We've had many of them. Our home sits in a spot that's really good for that, but even, even more so, you have all the surrounding communities, Arlington Heights, Wheeling, Mount Prospect, Northbrook, et cetera, and you probably have within a five-mile radius, I don't know, 500,000 people or something like that. It's a pretty large number, and people come to town for weddings, people come to town and stay at our place to do, for work purposes. You have work groups that show up, and they're doing conventions or trade shows. We've had people come for funerals. We've had people just come on vacation. We had a family that just stayed about a week during Christmas, and they just spent their Christmas there, and they enjoyed it. So, and its proximity to Chicago, of course, Chicago's a vacation destination, and although as a short-term rental, Prospect Heights doesn't sit right in downtown, there are plenty of families that would much rather stay in the country feel that Prospect Heights has than stay their entire stay in downtown Chicago. Perhaps they're going to commute down there a couple of days, see the museums, et cetera, et cetera, go to the lakefront, but they want to come back to a nice suburban home. So that's what I wanted to just share, and just offering some perspective on those questions. Hopefully, that helps.
All right, thank you, sir. Pat, did you have anything else?
Just one more thing, I mean, I've never met anybody who lives in Prospect Heights who said, yeah, I wish I got a short-term rental right next door to me, you know, my kid's looking, you know, to meet new people or whatever. I just, it's a very different use. I'm not sure that, it's one of those things, I think, that comes before the council, and sometimes these issues come before the council, where we look at it, and we're trying to solve a problem, because that's what we're here to do. We want to get these, you know, anybody who's in the shadows doing this out of that, so we can control it. But by the same token, I feel like we... But by the same token, I feel like we, uh, I feel like we're treading in the waters that if the, if the residents do, might not be too thrilled. You know, that, you mean, right next door, somebody could come here and then every two weeks, somebody's moving in or out and hear of short-term, you know, and I usually go in my back, not me, but talking like somebody in the fourth ward or third ward that have backyards. I used to, uh, go in my backyard with a fire and have some friends over. Now, I got these people over here, I don't know who they are. It's different. It, it takes away from the, you know, kinda like the community environment. When you're talking, or, I'm not sure, somebody was talking about the rentals like in, uh, on the east side of Lake Michigan. Those are, communities are based on that or east coast or when you're in Florida or Cali. Those are like communities where, yeah, everybody knows half of these places are rentals, you know, but you decide to live there, you live there. I just think this really changes a little bit of how, it, it, it changes the, the, the neighborhood a little bit. Not necessarily in a bad way, just a different way that I don't know people would be used to. So, that, that's, that's my concern, but I do agree it needs to be, we need to control it.
The, the hard part right now with this is, we didn't know this existed in our town. You know, we've had people who've called who wanna do bedrooms. They wanna rent their basements. They want to do this and without some control or regulation. And the way our rental ordinance has been written, it'd be hard to stop because we've looked at rental businesses, single-family rental businesses in Prospect Heights since the creation of Prospect Heights. You know, it's always been a viability. So, this is just like I think, uh, Nick, Mr. Cologne indicated, this is the, the, the Uber phenomenon for the, the, the alternative to staying at a hotel and, you know, the comfort levels that go with that. But I just don't think that we need to be blindsided either. You know, and that's one of the things that, or be caught in a position where we have to grant it without any controls because of the way, or be opened up to challenge because of that. So, I know that's there, but I'm just trying to prepare down the road and to answer those questions.
May I also speak to that one?
Um, if you don't mind, sir, I appreciate your comments. I'm gonna limit it just to the council members for the time being and we may get to back to you. I, I appreciate your comments though.
May I speak?
Yes, Wendy, go ahead.
I would like to ask Mr. Cologne whether or not his short-term rentals are ongoing. Are they continuous? Are they, are there interruptions? I mean, I just wanna know, last year, how often have you had these short-term rentals?
Sure, uh, no problem. I'll, I'll be happy to answer that. I, I can just give you some ballpark figures. If you needed something more specific, I could provide it later. But, um, our average length of stay, I would say, is somewhere around five or six days. The average size of group that we have is, I would say, around six. We've had stays as short as three days and our longest stay has been, I believe, fifteen days and kinda anywhere in between. The, the property has been very active, uh, right since we started it. Uh, in, on April ninth was our first listing last year, our first booking, excuse me, last year. And throughout the summer, it was very busy, even through January and February here, which tend to be slower months. Uh, the rates are a little bit lower right now, but we're still booking twenty to twenty-two days a month. So, it's pretty active. You know, sometimes we have back-to-back bookings and we have a checkout time of ten AM and a check-in time of four PM and our cleaning crew goes in there and, and takes care of everything within a six-hour window. So, um, I, does that answer what you're looking for?
I, I think so. So, you have a cleaning crew, just wanna ask about that. Cleaning crew comes in before these people come for their, for their booking and then cleaning crew comes in and cleans up after the, after their booking is over?
That's correct.
Okay.
Every booking has a cleaning and booking fee along with it, of course, as well as the short-term taxes that are applied to the total dollar amount that's ultimately paid. This cleaning crew that we have was recommended by Evolve, the marketplace vendor that we've signed up with. And they are fantastic. Not only do they go in and clean, but they help, they help us to manage any repair work that needs to be done because they know exactly where everything is, how much stock is available. And after somebody leaves, they check everything. If there's little dings in the wall or, uh, you know, just little hiccups that go along the way. We've had little drywall repairs or, uh, you know, toilet seats broken and whatever, something along those effects. We, we, we take care of it right away. And Evolve or Airbnb or any of those for that matter, have coverage to pay for repairs up to, in the case of Evolve, up to five thousand dollars for any stay, plus they additionally, uh, provide a million dollars of liability insurance. That goes above and beyond the, the short-term rental insurance we already have.
Thank you. So, I mean, I, I think it makes sense what, what Dan Peterson is saying. I think we do need these rules to protect the, the neighborhood, the properties. Um, I'm not worried about the neighborhood. I don't think that this is going to have any negative impact on the neighborhood. I don't think we have, maybe I should ask Dan this question. Do, you know, with respect to the quantity of these short-term rentals, what are, what are we looking at here for right now? I mean, I'm not, I don't know that that's gonna increase just because you have rules being, you know, uh, more rules implemented, but what are we looking at in terms of quantities of these short-term rentals right now?
Right now, we only have Mr. Cologne as a licensed, approved rental property. And we were notified of this and found out about this when we started getting checks through the hotel motel tax. Okay?
Okay.
Then we investigated that and Mr. Cologne's family were gracious. They were open, showed us everything, how it was working for them and that. And shortly thereafter, we got a couple of calls on basements and stuff, but they, no, those calls were not related to that because it was not known at that time. What I'm looking at is that, you know, it's been in the news, you know, there's a low, high likelihood that we may be getting, uh, a new neighbor here in a number of years that would provide weekend travelers, you know? And there could be, I'm not saying there's going to be, but there could be more of this based on if the Chicago Bears do relocate to Arlington Heights. We also have business travelers that come into this area regularly now, you know? And there's a high number of people that, um, look for alternatives to hotels. So, do I think we're going to have an overabundance of these? Probably not. But there will be enough of them out there that without any rules, we're gonna be stuck in a, 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 a situation where I don't know how we may be able to restrict them.
And that makes good sense. And I would, I would bet that Arlington Heights and other cities surrounding us also have rules and, and ordinances regarding these issues as well.
Yes. The one thing that some towns who have been fighting that have been successful is because they never allowed single-family rentals, okay? Long-term rentals. Because we've always looked at this and allowed this and basically a short-term rental, even though he's had back-to-back tenants and stuff, it's still acting like a single-family unit. So, what's different, you know, it's just a different car in the driveway is, but the occupancies haven't changed. The uses haven't changed. It's just the turnover of vehicles has. And typically, most, my experience with using Airbnb, I'm in, using them because it's comfortable. Then I'm going to meet my friends or I'm going to do the trip that I planned. I'm not out there necessarily to meet the neighbors. That's not the purpose. They really, I'm sure, don't necessarily wanna know who I am. You know, I'm there for a short vacation.
And, and if we, for some reason, do get a larger quantity of, uh, th- these kind of short-term rentals, we can change our, our ordinances and our rules to, to make it more restrictive and to make, but, and put in more requirements?
In review of the short-term rental ordinances that I have, Fox Lake in particular and a couple of others, ours is, how, what's on paper today is one of the most strict that I've seen. Actually, it is the most strict. Some of the requirements we do, the video cameras for one is one that most of them don't do. Number two, minimum night stays. You know, we're requiring a minimum of three nights. We don't wanna one-night party. We don't wanna one-night in or out. And I think the, and I think Mr. Cologne pretty much stated it, the price point in which we would be, our town would demand, you're not going to get a lot of the fly-by-night users. This is, you know, um, pretty substantial market for the prices. I'm not gonna go into what Mr. Cologne was charging here tonight, but it's...
Three hundred and eighty-three dollars a night.
Cause you're online.
Say, it's not, not a secret.
No, it's not a, it's not a secret.
For his, for his lakefront home, which does make me chuckle. But, uh, it's a very, a very, very nice, well-maintained home according to these pictures.
And, and that's, that's off-season rate.
That, right, that's off-season rate, correct.
So...
Prospect Heights has a season?
Probably.
Yes, the lakefront home would, would command more rent in a warmer month, I'm sure.
The highest we saw was near eight hundred a night in the summer.
So, this gives us an insurance of that we're collecting the revenue we need to collect too. Plus, the application fee is substantial enough to cover our expenses and stuff.
Wendy, did you have anything else?
No, no, thank you, I appreciate that.
Anyone else have any questions?
I had a question, Mr. Cologne. Now, is there someone here that's managing the property since you, you don't live in the state? You live in California. Is there someone here that's, you know, managing if there was any issues?
So, we kinda have a multi-layered approach. Being that we are originally from the Chicago area, of course, we have a lot of, uh, network contacts that we've just built up over the years of, you know, people that we know that are good landscapers, uh, people that can do repair work, et cetera. We have several people close by that can do repair work. The, the cleaning crew, like I mentioned, does play an integral role. We are paying a, a premium service fee for the service we're getting in that this is more of an on-demand kinda schedule. This isn't just a housekeeper coming to clean a house once a week or once every two weeks. The schedule is constantly moving. The, this person has access to our online calendar and also, uh, manages and cleans four or five other houses, not just us. We're not her, her only client. But this was the person that came to, recommended by Evolve. And, you know, so, they not only clean, but they also monitor what's going on in terms of any kind of repairs that are needed. The cameras tell us a lot of the story as well. We're, we're watching those cameras continuously remotely through the Ring camera system we have. We can go on the app and, and watch who's coming in, who's going out. We, we pay attention to it. The service, uh, data, we, service we have holds up to twelve months' worth of videos so we can go back and recapture any video and download them if we need to, uh, for any purpose. And then Evolve, the marketplace vendor, does serve as a mediator. If there's any issues along the way that would get out of hand, they will imme- if we just, you know, immediately call them, they will get in touch with that, with that guest. You know, we've had a couple of cases of, uh, people bringing dogs into the property. We have a no pet policy. So, for us, that's kind of a big deal. We have a family with allergies, et cetera. We don't want pets on the property. And we, we also view dogs as a, kind of a higher risk because we don't know the dogs that are coming into the neighborhood. We don't want them running around chasing neighbors or whatever. So, we've had cases where, uh, oftentimes, it's not the guests themselves. It might be a friend of the guest that comes over for dinner, that brings a pet, whatever have you. Point being is that Evolve contacts them. Uh, if it were a situation where they were getting out of hand, if there was a party going on that's explicitly stated as against the rules on our listing, if it were to go down that, to that point, uh, Evolve would initiate an eviction. It's all part of the fine print of, uh, that they agree to all the terms prior to the listing. If we had to, we could get the police involved. We haven't had to do that thus far. And, and just, our experience has been that these are upstanding clients for the most part. We've had a couple of little hiccups, but nothing, nothing that was really disturbing the neighborhood. With regards to the question about the neighbors, we're very close to all the folks that are on Owen Court there. We're regularly in contact with them and, uh, the closest neighbor right behind us has not had any issue whatsoever with what's been going on at our house. So, I hope that that's what continues or what we would see throughout Prospect Heights and see it as a longer-term benefit rather than it being the horror story that you might hear that has happened a few times in history with other Airbnbs, et cetera.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from anyone? Daniel?
No.
I think all of my questions have been answered. Uh, the only other thing that I was, uh, thinking about was are there any recommendations as far as access to the property in terms of, uh, for instance, would they have a, like a keyed access where they can change the code between different renters? Or do they just hand out a key? And is, in addition to that, is there, whether it's the owner or a local manager, is there a key holder locally that could be contacted if needed?
That's a great question that I don't have an answer to and I don't think we would require it, but I believe, Nick, how do you handle yours?
Okay, so we have coded door locks. And we opted to go with coded door locks that are not Wi-Fi remote, uh, function, with the right Wi-Fi remote functionality because the feedback we got from the locksmith said that those types of locks tend to be unreliable and they often go offline and you can't get control of them again. So, we have a simple, a battery-powered, uh, button push-type code. We do not change the code between every, every stay, but that's also where the video, the security cameras come in, is that's a huge deterrent. We've never had anybody try to come back. The, the cleaning crew, uh, they have a key, a physical key to the house. And as a backup, we have a physical lock box with a set of keys that should one of the coded locks fail, we can give a separate code that would get into the physical lock to get a physical key if, if somebody couldn't get in that was trying to check in. And then periodically, we change the code. Every one to two months, we, we change out the code.
Okay. Thank you, I was just curious about that, but we don't have any requirements for that.
No.
Okay, I don't have any further questions unless anyone else does.
And, uh, this is first reading, so...
Yeah, this is just for discussion, so no action is being taken tonight. Thank you, Director Peterson, and thank you, Mr. Cologne, for your...
Yes, thank you.
Information, we do appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
All right, next item of business, um, item nine B. This is actually a request for waiver of first reading. This is a staff memo and ordinance granting certain variations, reducing the required, uh, reverse corner side yard and fence material for the property at two twenty-six Fairway Drive in Prospect Heights. Again, this is, um, waiver of first reading. First, could I just have a motion for that waiver of first reading?
So, move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Dan, would you like to just give the background on this before we move on?
Yes, this is, uh, property and Fairway Estates. And, um, this is a reverse corner side yard situation where, um, the rear yard of the applicants actually backs up to the front yard of the property behind them. And, um, our code requires a very substantial setback, um, on that rear property line. Addition, so the exhibit five, which happens to be a diagram here, shows in red what the code requires and then the blue what, um, the variance, one variance request is for. And then, secondly, um, our code requires an eighty percent open wood fence and they requested a material change to a decorative metal fence to be consistent with other fences in the neighborhood and still meet the eighty percent open. With that, the PCBA heard testimony that night and the... With that, the PZBA heard testimony that night, and the rear neighbor was there and said she fully supports the applicant, and so did the four other comments we got. So, and they recommended approval 5 to 0. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dan. Again, for the waiver of first reading only, we do have a motion and a second. Could I have a roll call, please?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion and a second, I believe. Could we have a roll call?
Yes. Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Delick?
Aye.
Alderman Ludwitzson?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0, which brings us to the second reading of this item. Staff memo and ordinance granting certain variations, reducing the required reverse-corner sideyard and fence material for the property at 226 Fairway Drive in Prospect Heights. Could I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Could I open it up to discussion? Does anyone have any questions for Dan or anyone on this item? If there are no questions, could I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Ludwitzson?
Aye.
Alderman Delick?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. Item 9D, this again is a request for waiver of first reading. Staff memo and ordinance granting certain variations to reduce the required interior sideyard, 15 feet to 12.35 feet for the property at 406 West Willow Road in Prospect Heights. Again, this is waiver of first reading only. Could I have a motion to approve?
So move, Morgan Adams.
Second, Cameron.
I have a motion and a second. Again, Director Peterson, if you'd like to give us a background on this.
The applicants are requesting a minimal interior sideyard variation on each side of the house to construct an addition across the rear of the house, not to exceed the existing building lines. The house was built prior to the city becoming a city, and thus, the house was built into the required 15-foot interior sideyard. The applicants are here if you have any questions for them. But it was a unanimous recommendation from the PZBA to approve the minimal variations to the interior sideyards.
All right, thank you. First of all, this is again the request for waiver of first reading, and we do have a motion and a second. Could I have a roll call on this item?
Yes. Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Delick?
Aye.
Alderman Ludwitzson?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0, which brings us to the second reading of this item. Item 9E, staff memo and ordinance granting certain variations to reuse the required interior sideyards from 15 feet to 12.35 feet for the property at 406 West Willow Road in Prospect Heights. Could I have a motion to approve?
So move, Morgan Adams.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Peterson or the homeowners who are here this evening? All right, if there are no questions or discussion, could I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Delick?
Aye.
Alderman Ludwitzson?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. So congratulations. Thank you for coming in this evening, by the way.
Thank you.
All right, that covers our new business. Staffing elected and official reports. We have no reports on the agenda this evening with our new format. I believe the only person that requested to speak, if you still have a report to give, Joanna Przysnyuk, the city clerk?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to remind everyone of the Wheeling Greater Area that we have some networking events. One in particular occurs on the second Tuesday of every month. And it's actually open to everyone, but eventually, it's for members only of the chamber, but guests are always welcome. And that's at Deerfield Bakery. It's a business-to-business networking group, a business referral network. And they always start at 7:45 a.m., and it goes through 9:00 a.m. They're located at 201 North Buffalo Grove Road in Buffalo Grove. So the next one is actually tomorrow, and then the next one's March 14th, and then April 11th. We have all of this on the website, at the Wheeling Chamber website. But I like to at least remind those who are listening, maybe who haven't had a chance to read our newsletter, or again, just reminding that everyone goes to the website every month to see what's new. And then very quickly here, again, this is nice because this chamber has become very community-centered. The representatives are from many areas around Prospect Heights Wheeling, meaning we have associate directors from the school districts, from the high schools, the park districts. I'm the secretary. We have the executive airport, a representative from there, and so on and so forth. And we keep adding on a few more that we feel would be okay. We just don't want our meetings to run too long. So please take a look at what the office, because we do have a lot of small business members and business groups all over here. They may not be, they may not be a huge business. They're just small business, or just one, or we have one person who's a business owner, no employees. So even if they're not a member, everyone's invited. Non-members may pay a small fee to come to these networking groups. So for example, on February 15th, the Social Bar and Grill in Wheeling, located at 401 East Dundee Road, it's a free event to members, but nonmembers can register for $15. And this is something that, when they see the value, maybe they will become chamber members. And then the last one that I would just add on is on February 16th. It's a multi-chamber event where many chambers come together, and it's a Zoom event. So $25 for nonmembers, $15 for chamber members. And that's running from noon to 1:30 p.m. Again, all listed on the website, but I wanted, you know, every now and then, I will make these announcements so people are acclimated that even if you're not a member, there's so much out there for nonmembers. And it's a time to learn and network with others. So thank you so much. And a happy Valentine's Eve to everyone.
Thank you, Joanna. Moving on to, start with elected officials' reports. Does anyone to my left have anything to report? Anyone to my right? There being none, moving on to staff reports. Again, starting to my left, does anyone have anything to report? Anyone to my right? There being none, we will move on then to the approval of warrants. City clerk, would you proceed with those, please?
Yes, thank you. The general fund, the total on that was $420,461.04. We had wire payments as well. On January 27, 2023 payroll, that amounted to $177,403.65. The January Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund payment was $16,221.05, bringing the total warrant amount to $614,085.74. For our council's approval tonight, please.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Could I have an approval or a motion to approve as presented, please?
So move, Morgan Adams.
Second, Cameron.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any changes or discussion on that? If there are none, could I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Ludwitzson?
Aye.
Alderman Delick?
Aye.
Alderman Cameron?
Aye.
Alderman Dash?
Aye.
Alderman Morgan Adams?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0. That brings us to public comment on non-agenda matters. Madam Clerk or Deputy Clerk, does anyone ask to speak this evening?
I'm not aware of anyone. If anyone would like to speak, please let us know.
If there's anyone online that would like to speak, please proceed. There being none, there is no executive session this evening, which brings us to adjournment. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much for coming out this evening.